Public hearing.
Are there two?
No, he's here for, he did the wrong thing.
When I went to get gas, it was in a car. And he said, it just the word, which is the word, and then she left action. And she's like, and he's like, why? As I say, does she work in the office or she in one of us? Well, she worked in the office.
So you want to start?
For the public hearing, right?
Yeah, I mean Sandy. Sandy registered speaking the gallery, so I think he doesn't know what he's doing.
Who's that?
Sandy.
Who's that?
Uh, CCR, he's registered for the gallery. You want me to go to the gallery?
He just came up, yeah, yeah, he's at gallery.
Yeah, okay. Then we'll hold off on him.
Okay, yeah.
The rest?
So how many minutes we doing?
Two.
No, no, for the public hearing.
So we just two per them? No questions, we can hear from them?
And that's it? Okay, so people can't come up?
What's that?
People can't come up randomly, quick randomly?
No, 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 it's, the bylaws require they register. She is a former FIAMI member, she called the office, she wanted to speak to you, she wants to rejoin FIAMI.
Public hearing. It's me each other at the time. And then that's it.
He's, he was the first speaker, but he's in the gallery, so. So you want to wait?
If you want to open, I'll be two.
We are live streaming.
All right. You're gonna do a pledge allegiance? Yeah, right?
Yeah, where we are on here.
All right. So you announce that, right? Normally.
It's with normally, no, normally she does it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll wait for her. No rush. Yeah, we're good.
Good enough.
Yeah, that is.
We're good. We don't need, so we got to stay in time.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I'm already live streaming, let me press record. And I'm gonna have to read one before.
Okay.
Get my charger. So remember, public hearing, that's all we do, we hear from the public, no questions.
Yes.
All right?
Got it.
That's separate from, we're gonna do pledge allegiance and all that.
Before?
Yeah.
Before this?
Yeah, that's what we decided leadership.
Okay.
That way we don't have to do it again.
Okay.
But technically when.
So we'll do this and this?
Yep.
We'll do that.
I'll read that.
Okay. Oh, you have it.
Yeah, he's being sergeant-at-arms tonight.
Okay.
So if you want to make that an hour and two.
All right.
We don't need a form until the meeting portion, which is really the gallery.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing and full board meeting of Bronx Community Board 11. Today is Thursday, March 27th. The time now is 6:56 PM. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, individual.
Liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for our fallen first responders and medical and military service personnel and for those. Thank you. So I'm gonna hand it off to our vice chair, who is doubling as sergeant-at-arms this evening, for the reading of the conduct statement.
Thank you, Cynthia. Community Board 11 meetings must be held in a professional and hostile-free environment. The following rules of conduct are applicable to members of the public, community board 11, and community board 11 staff. Any action or behavior that disrupts or interferes with community board 11 business will not be tolerated during any community board 11 meeting. It may result in individuals being asked to leave. If the action or behavior continues, this may be considered disturbing the peace, and the appropriate authorities may be summoned. If the meeting is held remotely, the person may be muted or expelled for the remainder. Repeated violations by the same person or group of people may result in further action by the community board. All public speakers must address the full board or the committee with their concerns. Electioneering for a position other than an officer of community board 11 is prohibited. Engaging in acts of violence, including threats, are grounds for immediate suspension of the right to attend meetings pending review by the ethics and disciplinary committee. Respect the equality, diversity, and privacy of all persons by respecting and valuing differences of culture and opinion. Refrain from unpleasant or disparaging remarks and other actions. Abstain from all forms of harassment by actively discouraging it. And last but not least, disseminating false information is prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the public hearing. We made it a pretty general community concerns. Prior to the start of the hearing, each member of the public wishing to speak shall submit in writing on a form a request for speaking time. I think those who wish to speak did so. I'm going to skip over all the other instructions. Other than that, it's basically two minutes. And if we're ready, Ms. Roxanne Delgado. You wanted the gallery. Okay. All right. Ronnie Calangelo.
Ronnie? Okay.
Okay, no problem. Okay. And Grace.
Maybe three seconds.
That's us. So. I basically just signed up to express my discontent with calling the board 15 minutes early for a fair, for a town hall with no subject. So, I mean, the last meeting, I know you guys were thinking about, you wanted to basically limit people's speech and violate the First Amendment by having this town hall so that they can talk about things that you don't want to hear during the full gallery. So I am opposed to that because freedom of speech is the first, First Amendment. And people come here to vent and, and talk. And, you know, express their pleasure, their displeasure, what have you, whatever goes on in the neighborhood and community concerns. So that's just all I wanted to say. I think you guys need to rethink everything and, and not try to tell people what they can and cannot say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Should I leave it on or off?
Yeah. So I guess our public hearing portion is over, and we'll move on to the gallery session. One second. One second. Quick roll call.
Okay. Are there people online? Please help me out. If I don't know they're here, so Cynthia Rodriguez is in person, Rich Reynosa is in person, Veronica Castro is in person. Hazel should be remote, if she's not, please let me know. She is great. Harry's excused, Edgar just walked in. Kadian? Okay, if anybody knows that they have an excuse, just say that, don't state the excuse, please. Ryan is excused, Patrizia Canberra is in person, Junior Campbell's in person, Stacianna De Leon is in person, Dr. Diallo is online. Alex Elson just showed up in person. I don't know about Avril Francis, if everybody knows, please let me know. Rabbi Fuchs, not seen. Kenneth Gelnick, is he online? Okay, Wendy's online. D1 is in person. Debbie Koalik is in person. David's excused, Kader is excused, Juan should be online. If he's not, please let me know. Jacqueline Lutnick? Okay. Damaj is in person, Naomi Pemberton is in person, Susan Perez is in person, Shradan Purdum is excused. He will let me, he wants everybody to know the excuse, the board members later on. Juanita Randall, I don't know if she's online or in person.
She texted.
Okay, she's excused, great. Joanne Rovino in person, Oral Southridge? Okay, Lisa Soto should be online, but she said she might be running late. Dear Taylor is in person, Joseph Thompson's in person, Sandra Unger's in person, Lisa Bollow is in person, Janice Walcott's in person, Duane Williams is in person. Jeanette Wilson is in person. So we have. Yes. So that means we have 21 people in person out of 30. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I confused, when I first, I didn't really look at Stacianna when I first saw her. I thought it was Janice initially, but I'm wrong. My apologies. All right, so that means we have 20 in person. And we have 38, so we have a quorum.
Thank you. So, wait, so I have. So these.
So you start with the online people?
Hold on a second. They chose, they wanted to do gallery?
Yeah.
So how should I, let's see.
Start with the people on the.
This one? This one?
Yeah, so Dr. Camilla.
And then these and then these?
Sure.
Yeah. All right. It's coming here?
Let me check. So do you need to meet her? I give it, nobody can meet themselves?
I don't see her. I don't see her.
She was maybe not.
Okay, so. So Dr. Camilla Tepelus from the Morris Park, it is not yet online, we'll circle back. Next up is Robert Press for the gallery.
Maybe three second warning.
Just tell me when to start.
Whenever you're ready.
Ready? Okay. The topic is ethics. Community Board 11 bylaws, page 16 of 17. Committee descriptions, ethics and disciplinary, I'm gonna go to the last sentence. If the committee, after due deliberation, is unable to come to a reasonable resolution on a merit, the complaint shall be referred to the Bronx Borough President's Office for review. So I'm wondering why complaint number 116, which the Ethics Committee could not come to do deliberations, has not gone to the Borough President's Office. But it seems, Ms. Rodriguez, that you have a conflict of interest in case 116 with your significant other, as you call him, who at least three days before the January 13th Ethics Committee meeting is now living with you according to a campaign finance disclosure filing dated January 10th, 2025. One day before the January 13th Ethics Committee meeting, your significant other asked me to do something against a person on complaint 116, which I did not do. The day after the meeting, he said to me, why didn't I do what he asked me to do? Now, I wrote to the Borough President's Office after finding out about the campaign finance board filing on the matter, and the answer was that I should go to the Conflict of Interest Board if I believe there is a conflict. At last month's full board meeting, February 27th, you introduced a motion during the meeting to send Ethics Case 116 back to the Ethics Committee. Since the motion was not in a written agenda, in order to amend the agenda, a vote must have been called for amending the agenda to add the motion, which was not done by you. So the motion was out of order and void. I could tell you that as a member of an Ethics Committee for six years. I still want to know why case 116 has not been moved to the Borough President's Office. Thank you. It should.
Case 116 is currently in the hands of the legal department, so we cannot discuss that. Thank you.
Sandy Libriano?
Sandy Libriano?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Libriano, I am from the Civilian Complaint Review Board. We are a city agency that investigates, mediates, and administratively prosecutes alleged complaints of police misconduct. With the understanding that obviously we need policing, and that policing is very difficult work. That being said, if you feel like you have experienced police misconduct, feel free to reach out to our agency at 212-912-7235. Or if you would like to request a presentation from me and the agency, you can reach me personally at 646-510-0082. We investigate complaints of force, abuse of authority, discourtesy, and offensive language. Thank you so much.
Okay. So Roxanne?
Evening, 30 second warning, please. I'm here regarding item 11B, section 2, regarding the motion of objection to 2132 Kruger New Alcohol Liquor Application. I'd like to say at the economic meeting held this month, there was concerns expressed by residents regarding the premise serving alcohol without a license on premise. Also, people who have direct interaction with the owner stating that she will hold a bar, not serve any food after hours. I've been located, which is on Lydigan Kruger, we already have a licensed smoke shop, mystery, a U-Haul dispensing, unlicensed, selling, without any licensed drugs. And also we have a bar, a barbershop, that's already has police activity involved. So that area is already a hotspot. So I really would like, hopefully, that you listen to the residents, because by you objecting to this license doesn't mean that they will not receive a license. It's to let us all do the due diligence to address the concerns that the residents have. The public did not appear in front of the Economic Committee to address the concerns, so we could not have a discussion to see if these concerns were valid, or how to mitigate these issues. So I ask you please to listen to residents, not to me, to the community, and do no objection, so I could do a due diligence to make sure these concerns are valid or not. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Calangelo, you're next.
Hello? I want to know how far in advance you pushed this meeting up to the time that you started it? How? How far?
Last week.
Last week? Hmm, I didn't see it, then it's my fault, I thought it was just yesterday. So is there any truth to the rumor, they want to put a 48-story building about two blocks from here? Does anybody know about that? Yes, not? Yeah, they want to put up a 40, okay, well, that's what I'm asking. So we know about it. Well, that's okay, no, I tied down to them, they answered me, instead we go, does anybody know? You know what I mean? It's okay. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, okay. You run your meeting the way you want, shut up. So anyway, I was just wondering if anybody knew? I don't know if there's any news about 1900 Seminole. I guess with the political season starting up, we'll have all sorts of parades and demonstrations, but still haven't, has anything new come up about that?
No.
No, see? You're not supposed to do that. But anyway, that's all I really wanted to know, so I guess I got my answers. And thank you for your time.
Now, Patricia, you want to say something?
Number seven, Jeremy? Seven? It's okay. Yeah, you're good. Try it.
All right, hello?
There you go.
Ronnie, I know that they did have a meeting last month. The person that was giving the meeting was Ruben Diaz Jr. at the Morris Park Association. I know they had, they presented it to the community. So that happened already, so. Oh, so they, okay, okay. Ronnie? I know Cindy will probably discuss it in her land use housing committee report, but they did come to the community board last week or two weeks ago, as well as Vanest and Morris Park. And they're very early on in the process. So we'll, we'll be hearing more, and we're, we're planning something more inclusive with the community, so we can hear from everyone.
That'd be nice. Thank you. I really mean.
Grace went already, right?
Yes.
Okay. Up next is Beth and Rob? I don't know. Try it.
I am Rob. So I just wanted to try to figure out if anyone knows the zoning laws for the area where it has to do with commercial. So on Colden Avenue between Vanest and Pierce, there was a banner that was put up on a private house stating that it was gonna be a family clinic, which sounds great, but then when you start reading it, one of the last things that they treat is opioid addiction treatment. So, I mean, how does that go about getting permits to open up in a private residential area? It is not commercial. It's about three blocks away from Morris Park Avenue. And it says opioid treatment addiction treatments. So it's a little concerning, and who's allowing that? And is there enough commercial property on Morris Park to be opening up one of those clinics where it's not next door to our neighbors?
Do you know the, the house number? 1609, thank you. 1609, what's the street?
Colden Avenue.
Yeah.
Nobody ever discussed it with anyone on the block? We just.
Yeah, nowhere, wherever the council member's office is aware of it, we had a constituent come, we have two, two constituents come in. So we'll have to get back to you. So you filled out the slip? You have your contact info, right? You filled out the slip to speak, right?
I'll double check the contact information. Yeah, I'll do that when, when.
Is it, is it not there? What's that?
He's got his, I'll put my.
Whatever, if you guys know each other well, and yeah. Yeah. All right. Put my contact to her.
Judith?
Same issue.
Same issue.
Okay. If you want to just, yeah, for the record, so folks online can hear you too. Sorry to make you get up.
Yeah.
I've lived here for 60 years, and this is a block that's residential. And all of a sudden, we see lots of other activity going on. It hasn't really started up yet, but somebody bought it from Long Island. So he doesn't live here. So he doesn't, he bought the house, but we didn't agree to anything like that. And we've never had that kind of thing going on in our block. It's a 1600 block of Colden Avenue, it's always been residential.
Thank you.
That's our complaint.
How long has, has it been? Have you seen it? Yeah, no, hold on.
They're not lining up to start up yet, but they, they tore up the floor, the ground in front of that so that people can park there.
Okay.
Truck was there the other day putting out blacktop. So we don't know when that's gonna start up. Nobody ever came by and told anybody about that.
Thank you, Judith. Is this Meta? Meta? Oh, come on down.
Good evening, I'm Judith Patell. I'm a neighbor of Judy, and I've also been in the neighborhood for 60 years. And very much distressed, finding out secondhand, so to speak, that they're going to put this walk-in clinic, or so they say, within our immediate proximity. The area, the block in itself is mostly occupied by newly diversified families, which is fine. And older people. And there's always been some concern about the safety and integrity of our neighborhood lately. We have heard a lot of rumors, and we would appreciate, I think, some clarification as to the nature of this establishment that they proposed to put there. If we've been misled, then we would like to be aligned. And the sooner we can address it, the better we will feel and the safer we would feel. Thank you for your time.
One second. So, like I said, we will get back to you.
In what way will you get back to us?
We could start with a phone call, right?
I don't, say that again?
We can start with a phone call, right? We, we can call you, right? Do you?
I don't think that left, no, I didn't leave a contact because.
Did you sign in?
I signed in.
Okay.
However, I didn't leave a contact because I don't feel very comfortable.
It's fine.
Being my first time here. And I don't, what would a phone call consist of, for example? Identify yourself and how do you?
Yeah, so you, I don't know if you can read this.
I can't.
Okay. All right, so. So my name is Jeremy, I'm the district manager of Community Board 11, I've been since 2011. So Harriet, who's at the sign-in table. Harry, you don't have business cards on you, right? I, I have mine, I'll give them to you, so you can call us. In addition to, if you want to stop by the office, because we're at 1700 block, 1741 to be exact. If you got a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
It's, the address is there, the phone number's there. So you don't, you don't need myself, I can give you my card, though. But either way, it's there. So I, the picture I did receive from Harriet, they do have a building's department permit. So legally, there may not be anything we can do, but we will look into it, okay? So at the very least, call us. If we don't have your number, call us.
Okay, I can do that.
Right?
Will I get a person?
It depends on when you call.
Well, then maybe you ought to lay out some parameters here.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, if I'm in the office and I'm using the restroom, for example, I'm in the restroom. I mean, like, come on.
Would be a.
Hold on. So I think, I'm, I'm chair of housing, I'm gonna bring this up to the housing committee, it's, it's coming up in a few weeks. I'll bring this issue up, so we can have folks at least defend themselves as to why that's happening on your block. So I, I promise you that as much.
Okay.
Um, hold on, Roger, you're next.
Yeah. Am I, am I two minutes is up?
Yeah.
See, I can talk more. Thank you very much.
So, so if. Meta? Meta? Mira, my apologies. If you, if you feel comfortable leaving your number, what I'll do is I'll bring these slips back up to Harriet. And if you want to leave a number for us, you can. If you'd rather, you know, you initiate and call us, that's fine too, whichever way you want to work it. But I'll leave the slips up front with Harriet in the event you want to leave a contact.
So we could try, we'll look into it tomorrow. So we could try to call you back. What's that? Yeah, I don't know if anybody's called 311 yet to file a complaint. So Harriet personally filed a complaint, we'll look into that. We'll maybe reach out to the building's department to have it expedited. But, you know, so you call. So the, the phone lines are on from nine to five. And if you call, leave a message, Harriet's always very diligent about checking it every day. You know, sometimes people complain that we don't pick up, but again, sometimes those people don't leave a message like earlier today. All right?
Name's Roger Castro, how are you?
Good, how are you? Go ahead.
The landlord had spoke to me, and I asked him, what are you gonna do with the place? And he says, I was gonna rent it out. I said, who are you gonna rent it to? And he says, I'm gonna try to get hospital workers in, nurses, technicians. And then they did the gas line, that's why they did the, they converted from oil to gas. And one day I come out, and I live right next door, and I look, and it has this banner of saying that they're gonna opioid and hypertension, diabetes, something else. Specialize in diabetes, hypertension, weight loss management, opioid addiction treatments. Now, they could put that on a residential block like this?
We're gonna find out.
Because this is a quiet block, there's kids on the block, we're gonna, talking about traffic. There's no parking on the block, is? Assessor rides, people coming down the block, looking in your yard. We don't need that on the block. I mean, I've been living in that house and my grandparents, my mother, since 1970. And we don't need that over there. That shouldn't be on a residential block. If you ever been down that block, it's nice and quiet, we don't need that. If you ever been down that block, it's nice and quiet. We don't need that. Is it, is it legal to do that?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna investigate, we're gonna find.
I mean, the guy didn't tell me, no, no indication that he was gonna do that.
You got thirty seconds, by the way, sorry.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay, but well, again, we'll bring it to housing.
Get back to me because it's really.
Yeah, we have. We have your um information, so what we.
Alright, okay, thank you.
You got it. Um, Dana Finch?
Ready? Um, so regarding the lawsuit filed yesterday over the city of Yes, I was somewhat surprised to see that the petitioners bringing the lawsuit include one individual who's a CB eleven board member, Lisa Velella. The lawsuit is filed against the City of New York, the Mayor of New York, the City Council, the New York City Planning Commission, and the New York City Department of City Planning. So my question to the board about the situation is whether a board member's status as a petitioner in this lawsuit, a lawsuit which concerns zoning and environmental reviews, means that the board member would need to recuse themselves from any discussions about and voting on matters involving zoning, environmental reviews, the City of New York, Mayor Adams, the Planning Commission, the Department of City Planning, and the City Council. The Plain Language Guide to Conflicts of Interest Law for Community Board Members states that conflicts of interest may arise when your community board service intersects with your private property interests. Velella is identified as a petitioner specifically because of her property interest, as stated in section six, paragraph one ninety-one of the lawsuit. So my question is, will the board request a ruling from the Borough President's Office and the City Conflicts of Interest Board on this possible conflict of interest? Thank you.
Yep, whoa, consult. Thank you. Uh, next is Manuel Martinez. Last but not least, by the way.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here to talk about, so in both Morris Park and, and I'm Allerton, we uh, we have the NYPL after-school program that provides homework help uh to children. I must say, it has been going extremely, extremely well in both branches. Uh, to the point, we are trying to kind of implement, you know, additional programs for parents while they're waiting for their uh, you know, for the waiting for their children to, to start. So that's happening Monday through Thursday. After school, we do provide snack and beverages to the children as well. So please, if, you know, anyone or any children that are struggling, especially with the language barrier, both Morris Park and Allerton are offering this program. Um, at Allerton, we are starting up our studio programs. I know I spoke about that for adults. We are now doing it for teenagers. So in April, we're gonna have like this open house where, you know, children, the teens can come in, they can view, you know, the microphones that we're able to use and the equipment that they're able to use, and then they're able to do independent access. So if they, you know, play an instrument, they want to record vocals, produce beats, um, they're able to do that at our branch. So we're gonna officially be starting that up. Um, in addition to that, uh, we are starting back up uh our English classes. So we have two versions of it. We have informal English classes and we have formal English classes. Formal English classes are the ones where you have to register and you gotta kind of show up for a certain amount of time. Um, those happen in the evenings, but we are also doing informal, just drop-in sessions for anyone that wants to practice their, uh, their, their English. This is gonna happen every Thursday from ten thirty AM to twelve PM, starting on April third. Um, in addition to that, for the younger, younger population, for babies under five, we are gonna be starting uh eight-week early literacy series on Saturdays from two to three PM, starting Saturday. Uh, Morris Park Library also offers, um, they offer what? English classes, the embroidery club for teenagers, uh, art and poetry. And then they're gonna do an author talk on April fifteenth. And a teen advisory board, and both our branches also, we offer CCP, which is known as college and career pathways. So where we help teenagers, you know, with resumes, with any college applications, how to apply for FOSFA, um, anything of that nature that prepares them for the real world for college. So both our branches offer that. And thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. Do you guys have computer classes, basic literacy, computer classes? Is that still a thing?
We.
Okay.
Colleague that's also gonna start doing the computer.
Great, okay.
We offer them now currently. Um, we have been discussing moving away from them. So we're offering right now, two times a month. They're on Tuesday mornings from eleven to twelve. Email basics and the very computer basics. We're really just trying to introduce anyone that does not know anything about computers with those two basic things. We have not seen a big attendance in it, so we're, we may be shifting away from that to focus more on the studio.
Any other questions, Chair? Uh, community? Go ahead.
Um, I know you said something about little babies and yours. How about Morris Park? Are they gonna have like little baby programs?
We have our early literacy programs and we have STEM. Uh, sorry, sorry. So we do conduct the same. Uh, but this is a series, so we're having a series coming up in the spring as well. But we're, we have our regular early literacy, I mean, I'm sorry, early story time for little ones, um, and also the stems uh and Lego.
And when is that?
It's usually Mondays.
On Monday?
Yeah.
At what time?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty on Mondays? Okay, thank you.
Even though.
Yeah, so the one I spoke about is where a paid vendor comes in. So this is a group that sings, they play instruments. Specifically for that. This is basically aside from our regularly scheduled baby programs. So we do offer those Wednesdays at eleven AM. Those are the regular one where our librarians are doing the work. The one I spoke about is a vendor-led program where we paid someone to come in to do this whole eight-week literacy series.
Morris Park is so, I just put in my programming for vendors, so I'm waiting for approval so we can start.
And you'll announce it when you find out.
Yes, we should be announced.
Thank you.
Anyone else? One's going twice, so, okay. Uh, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Camelia, if you could unmute. Jeremy, if you can unmute. Camelia? Okay, you're up next. Yeah. Hopefully she's there. Camelia, one wants?
Oh, hello?
There you go.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I joined a little bit like, this is the gallery, this is the gallery section, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. I had a, uh, I, I am having a little bit of difficulty. It turns out people who login on um, on cell phones, my battery was down and it tells me I'm in just audio mode only, whatever. I think it's a web glitch. But just wanted to say to uh, to everyone, uh, thank you to, to, to the Community Board eleven for participating and for distributing um, the, the press release and to Jeremy particularly for, for going with, with uh, with a TV station at Loretto Park in relation to the forthcoming um, New York State allocation of twenty million dollars to the Morris Park uh area. We are very happy about that, of course. We were one of the partners submitting ten out of the thirty-two proposals that made this, made our area uh win this state allocation. But just to be very specific, so, so there is not money uh right now allocated for nothing in particular. It is just that Morris Park was selected as an area to be allocated this money. But from here on, state will organize a, a series of community meetings where actually they will listen to projects from all local organizations and, and everybody, and then they will make a final decision uh, on a sort of project-by-project basis. But the good news is again, that the, the, the money has been allocated to the area. Uh, this is just because uh, we received a lot of sort of people now asking for money, as if we, we have them right there. We don't and, but again, the area will receive a important, um, um, yeah, important infrastructure i- investment. And the second, I just would want to urge again, Community Board eleven and each and every single chair of, of a committee, please do minutes. This is part of your duty i- under. Yes, so the fact that there are committees that for years don't have minutes posted on the website, it just tells you that there are committees that for years are not doing their job. This is just as important as actually holding the, the meeting. So, so I'm urging the CB eleven leadership to really make a focus on this. I mean, leadership change, things need to change. People don't need to watch two hours of recordings to be able to. I need to be able to download a document and reading thirty seconds, minutes of any committee that, that is meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, alright.
We need to caucus for a second. Thank you, Camelia. Any, did anyone, did anyone have a question for Camelia? Hello? Do we have A.J. Ramos on? A.J. Ramos?
Right, we, we tried, okay. Um, so up next, we have the electeds. Bronx Borough President's Office? Oh, Kira, yes, hello. Do you wanna wait? Do you wanna go now? You just, yeah, no worries.
Board members, is this on? Okay. Alright, good evening, board members. Um, I've been speaking to a lot of you, where as you know, we're doing interviews for those who are up for reappointment. So if you have applied and not yet, um, signed up, please reach out to me because we're trying to get those done over the next two weeks. Um, Community Board eleven has had a good amount of applicants, so we look forward to adding more folks to the board. Uh, forgive me, I didn't bring the list of those who did not reapply. I don't have that with me. I would have announced that, so I, I do apologize. Um, I did leave some flyers in the back with information of events that we have upcoming. Um, and that's all. I know you guys have a very long agenda ahead, so thank you.
Oh, Kira? I do know off the top of my head, one board member who did not reapply. Um, that's, I think that's just Edgar, correct? Currently? Yep. I'm sad. Um, moving on, Councilmember Felice's office. Councilmember Marmarado's office.
Good evening, Chair and members. My name is Mark Nites. I'm the Director of Budget and Legislation, Councilwoman Marmarado. Uh, thank you for being here this evening. Uh, I'd like to share some updates and recent activities in our community. On the twenty-sixth, we had held Con Edison in our office. It was a good opportunity for residents to come and discuss their concerns with billing, energy, usage, and ongoing projects in the area. Really appreciate everyone who came out. Um, we have some events upcoming in the district. I left some flyers in the back. I won't uh say them for the sake of time, but thank you again for being here this evening. If you have questions, feel free to stop by our office, give us a call, send us an email. Have a good night. Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, I meant to call you, um, I'm blanking on what now. Um, I know Harriet called you about, we did get a constituent com- uh, asking about compost bins. I know they're, you guys are reimbursing for garbage bins, but what about compost bins?
Uh, I'm uncertain about compost bins yet. We could reach out to D S and Y about it.
De- Debbie?
You could call three one one for one free compost bin.
Currently.
Currently.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Christine Marmarado's office also had an event that was really wonderful and I was able to attend. Uh, Women of Distinction. It was a beautiful breakfast that really honored uh exceptional women in our district that really um are, you know, did wonderful things in their area. And I just want to say that Veronica Castro was one of the nominees and we should congratulate her.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Councilmember Riley's office. Uh, Mayor's office? Uh, Comptroller's office? Public Advocate's office?
Hello, hi. My name is Stacy from the Office of the Public Advocate. I'm a Constituent Services Associate. And I just uh wanted to share that the Public Advocate is having a criminal law talk series in Harlem this month on March twenty-ninth, and you can reach out to our office at um, Constituent Services, advocate.nyc.gov. If you um had any questions or follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Bronx District Attorney's office?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Nina Norwood, Bronx District Attorney's office. I just have two events that I would like to announce coming out the DA's office. First is our Eighth Annual Child Safety Fair. That's gonna be on Saturday, April the nineteenth, from eleven AM to three PM. That's gonna be at PS one oh six in Parkchester, fifteen fourteen Oste Avenue. That's gonna be a great event. We're gonna have it more like a carnival-style event, so there's gonna be cotton candy, popcorn, prizes and things for the kids, giveaways and of course, tabling with free resources. So we're encouraging everybody in the community to come out and enjoy that event. And second, we have our Fourth Annual Prom Dress and Suit Drive Collection that is still going on. So we're asking for new or gently-used prom dresses or suits or gowns that you would like to donate. These will be collected at the District Attorney Building. That's one ninety-eight East one hundred and sixty-first Street. So we have a bin that we keep in the lobby, so you have to do is come in and let security know you're there to make a donation for the prom dress suit drive. They take it from you and put it right into the bin, and that way you can walk right out and you don't have to worry about trying to go through security to make your donation. So that's gonna segue into our prom dress suit event that is tentative for May third. So that is going to be most likely at the uh Bay Plaza Mall. And the reason why the District Attorney likes to do it there, we do it in collaboration with Bronx Fashion Week because we make it more like a shopping experience for the kids. They're able to come, it's in a storefront, they're able to go in and we assign personal shoppers, which are volunteers to the kids. So the women go with the girls, the guys go, you know, with the uh boys. And they teach them how to tie ties and put on bow ties, cummerbunds. The girls get dresses, bags, accessories. So it really makes them feel like they're in a real shopping experience and that way they're able to enjoy their prom experience to the fullest for all the young people in our community that's looking forward to the upcoming prom season. So I have both flyers are over on the table. Please feel free to share it among the community. I also provided it electronically to the District Manager and the Chair Rodriguez. So unless there's any questions for me, thank you very much.
Nina, I just shared them to our socials. Thank you for the reminder. Uh, AOC's office, U.S. Representative Ocasio-Cortez's office.
Yes, hello.
Hi there.
Hi, uh, my name is Catherine. I'm with the Office of Congresswoman Ocasio-Cortez. The Office of Congresswoman Ocasio-Cortez invites your high school students to participate in the twenty twenty-five Congressional Art Competition. The winner's artwork is recognized in a special reception by the Congressional Institute and displayed in the U.S. Capitol for one year. All artwork must be submitted by Friday, April twenty-fifth at five PM. You can email a high-resolution photo of your artwork to nyfourteenart@mail.house.gov. For more, for more information, visit our website, ocasio-cortez.house.gov slash services slash Congressional Art Competition. Federal judges have issued a ruling ordering the rehiring of federal probationary workers who were terminated across more than eighteen government agencies. We strongly encourage any affected federal employee to contact our office for further information and assistance regarding this matter. To stay informed about grant opportunities, please subscribe to our grants newsletter by emailing nyfourteengrants@mail. To stay informed about grant opportunities, please subscribe to our Grants newsletter by emailing NYfourteengrants@mail.house.gov. We are currently awaiting guidelines for the community project funding. Once they are available, you will receive updates through our newsletter. Tax season is here. The IRS Direct File Tool is a free, easy-to-use, and secure way to file your twenty-twenty-four federal tax return online. Visit directfile.irs.gov to learn if you're eligible. As a reminder, as a reminder, our office is here to help you with any issue pending before a federal agency. You can give us a call at seven-one-eight-six-six-two-five-nine-seven-zero. We are available at our Hunts Point Office Mondays through Thursdays from nine A.M. to five P.M. The office is located at twelve thirty-one Lafayette Avenue, three L, six-ten Bronx, New York. Zip code one zero four seven-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Torres' office?
Good morning, Congressman. I just wanna give you my email. In case you have any federal issues, please send me a detailed email. The email is joseph.mcmannus@mail.house.gov. Uh, we do take walk-ins, but if you're gonna come into the office, please try and make a, a reservation. And our number is seven-one-eight five zero three nine six one zero. We're usually open Monday to Friday, ten to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Bailey's office?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Homie Spencer from Senator Bailey's office. I'm covering for Rachel, who's usually here. She didn't give me any updates, but on my end, um, we are hosting an event. Sorry, I'm the events coordinator for Senator Bailey. We are hosting an event. It's an autism walk over in Mount Vernon. It's gonna be at Memorial Field from, and on April fifth from ten A.M. to twelve A.M., twelve P.M. And it's gonna be great. We're gonna have resources there for any individuals in the community who might know someone who has special needs children or know, just not only for children, it's just autism in general. We're gonna have resources there, and we really would like the community to pop out so that we can show that we support the special needs community, not only in our district, but worldwide. So there's that happening. Feel free to email any constituent concerns to our email, Senator J. Bailey at NYSenate.gov, or feel free to come into our office. We're on nine-five-nine East two-thirty-third Street. Or give us a call. Our number is seven-one-eight And have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Senator Fernandez's office? Senator Rivera's office? Assemblymember Alvarez? Okay. Senator Rivera?
Uh, yes. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm Alvaro Mundaca from Senator Rivera's office. Um, a quick update of, uh, some, uh, upcoming events. Uh, Senator Rivera is hosting a Know Your Rights workshop for schools and families. Uh, this workshop is for school administrators, teachers, and parents so that they can learn about the constitutional protections that only those who reside in the United States have, regardless of, eh, immigration status. Um, Thursday, April third, from six to eight, eh, it's on Zoom, so no registration is required. I have left some flyers in the, on the table. And, uh, and you can join Senator Rivera on the Bronx Health Link for the Second Annual Community Baby Shower, Explore Resources, Raffles, and Vital Health Education for New and Expecting Parents on Wednesday, April sixteen, from noon to four P.M. At Monro- Monroe University. And, eh, join us at the Williams Bridge Oval Annual Spring at Hunt on Saturday, April nineteen, from eleven to two P.M. Uh, you can, eh, call our office at seven-one-eight-nine-three-three-two-zero-three-four for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Alvarez's office? Assemblymember Benedetto's office? Okay. All right. Assemblymember Hiesty, Assemblymember Reyes, anyone? Assemblymembers of Carl's office. Hi, Evan.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, happy, uh, happy Thursday, everyone. Uh, so my name is Evan. I'm with Assemblymember John Zakara Junior's office. Uh, some of you may remember, at the end of last month, the Assemblymember convened a, uh, group of city agencies to discuss the site at nineteen-twenty East Gun Hill Road, the old Pelham Diner. I am happy to report that, uh, that with our friends at DSNY, they have removed all the graffiti. The Assemblymember, uh, and myself have met with, uh, the new owners of the site. They are looking forward to speaking to, um, the relevant committee on CB eleven, as well as the full board, to discuss what they would like to do there. Um, right now, we know that in there inspected, they're about to shut, uh, cap off the gas lines and electricity so that demolition can, uh, uh, take place. Um, the Assemblymember is excited to announce that on April fifth, we will be hosting our annual Easter egg event across from Peace Plaza on Pelham Parkway, uh, Greenway. We are also hosting a meet your representative from the Department of Buildings on May sixteenth from two to P, two P.M. to seven P.M. This is by appointment only, so please, uh, call us to book an appointment. And tomorrow, we will be hosting a, uh, free food giveaway on the corner of Morris Park Avenue and White Plains Road. Uh, that's all I have for you now, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan. Moving on to the Chair's Report. Um, reminder, discussion of motions on the agenda are limited to at most four questions or comments by board members. Um, a question that came up recently in leadership, I think it was in Leadership or Executive Board, was, um, with regards to, um, the text message notifications. I know that we've been getting either texts or robocalls or both. So the question is, do we want to continue with one or both? Um, if we stick with the texts, that's one expense. If we continue to do both, we're talking about two expenses. So, um, discussion?
We've only been doing the text messages, but we did decide we would do, uh, the robocalls. So if we wanna resurrect that, or do we wanna keep it as is? Is the real question. Uh, no, I think, Naomi, one of the mic.
Yeah, I think the text messages are fine. I don't, I don't have any issue with that.
I, I'm fine with text messages. I think we all have cell phones, right? And most of the time, when you get a phone call, do you pick it up if you don't know the number?
So status quo then? Text messages?
Thank you. Um. Email etiquette. So just a reminder to everyone, I know that sometimes we get, and I actually caught myself today forwarding an email without giving it a second thought. Um, we have to be very careful with, um, when we're doing reply-alls, when we're doing, um, reply-one-person, when we're sending something out to multiple people, that we're very, very careful with, um, people's personal emails. I know everyone had gotten the email, uh, recently from Jeremy about inadvertent disclosure. So just kind of cautioning everyone to continue to be very, um, intentional when you're, when you're putting your emails together. Um. Also, I think it's important to, this applies to us all, but I think more so for, uh, committee chairs, is trying to include the district manager and the office staff in some, you know, in our emails. Um. If we're discussing business, then it's important for the staff to be aware of what business we're discussing because at the end of the day, we all end up calling Jeremy for one, two, three, four, five things. And if we're not including the office staff in our emails, they're completely oblivious to what's going on. Um, I would also caution folks from being, again, intentional as to what emails and things, uh, we're sending to the Borough President's office. I'm sure that the Borough President is more than happy to hear from us on a regular basis. But sometimes it becomes very, um, just minutia and almost day-to-day housekeeping issues that don't necessarily have to go to the Borough President's office. Um, I'm not saying that I'm censoring anyone or attempting to censor anyone. I'm just asking us all to be mindful, um, when we're in, who we're including in our emails, and what is our intent when we're including different people in our emails. Um, any questions, comments? Okay. Uh, moving on, combining bylaws and ethics committees. I know that this was something that was discussed at Leadership and Executive, right? Um, the idea, I know bylaws is an ad hoc committee. Ethics is a standing committee. However, I feel that both those committees see a lot of overlap in what they do. Ethics are to review behaviors. The bylaws are the rules that we're supposed to be following. So to me, it only makes sense that we should consider combining them. What that looks like, um, in terms of, you know, who's on the committee or whatever is, 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 is a separate issue. I know that some people might have objections. I get it. Um, it's something to think about. We can bring it up to bylaws later on. Go ahead, Sandy.
Right.
It has to be discussed by each committee. Do they wanna do it? And then what happens if the bylaws is ad hoc and the ethics is standing? That's another issue. What do you do? You can't, you know, divide it in half.
Oh, okay. Um, like I said, it's something I'm putting out there. I'm not, you know, deeply married to the idea. I just think that in terms of functionality, it would make sense. We can discuss it at bylaws. We can, you know, I'm just putting it there as, as something to consider. Um, if anyone has any comments, Naomi?
Hello, it's Anna. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I agree with Sandy because, um, we really need to sit down and work out what's the process going to be. What's the plan of action? Once we understand what the plan of action is, and we have to make sure that it serves the commi- the community. Thank you.
A hundred percent. And, and that's part of the, eh, the idea of having, you know, this conversation is, to think about it. We can always sit down, we can throw ideas out there, it's fine. Um, you know, I will go with whatever the majority wants. I'm not here to impose any, any particular will. So we can think about it and revisit it, you know, next time. It's fine. Okay, Jeanette? Under the number three?
I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea. I think the first step would be for each committee to discuss it within the committee first, to see if this is an idea that they want to move forward with. And if it is, then we can figure out the procedure to do so. But I think the first step would be for the committees to internally have that discussion, to see if that's something that makes sense.
Thank you.
Um, I think it's a great idea, too. Yeah. Okay. I think it's a good idea, too. Um, it makes sense, bylaws does regulate the rules and the guidelines by which we, uh, go by. So who are better to be able to determine if it's been broken or somebody has violated them? To Sandy's point, yes, bylaws is ad hoc and currently ethics is not. But also, in my opinion, and I know that there are a few other community boards, that the Ethics Committee only meets when there's a complaint. So it too can become an ad hoc committee, doesn't necessarily have to meet every month. That's just my opinion.
Okay, moving on to proposed bylaw amendments. Um. Everyone should have. Yep. So we have, what? So there are two versions, hyperlinked in the agenda. One is, um, a version with a lot of red, that's so that you can see the different, um, edits and revisions that were made or corrections. And then there's another one that looks like a fresh, clean document. Um, and that is without all the red, like the revised version, you know, so that people can read it and see, you know, how it, how it flows. We're not voting on anything today. This is for the Bylaws Committee to go over it with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that we get all the tweaks and revisions, um, correct. Jeremy does have a few copies, if people want to take a look. Any questions? Sandy?
That the, uh, bylaws and the health. It's not on.
Go ahead, Sandy.
That the bylaws will meet at eight, eh, at six o'clock on April eighth, and then we'll have the Health Committee after. Just letting you know that. The eighth.
April eighth. Uh, moving on to nominations and Elections Committee. We are coming upon election, election season here on the board, and so I'll be putting together the nominations on an Elections Committee. Basically, the committee is to make sure that whoever's nominated for a particular office is qualified or eligible to run for said office. And, um, obviously, they're, they are able to make nominations as well. Um, so if anyone is particularly interested, um, let me know. You can send me an email. And finally, um, Jeremy and I were discussing, hopefully, we can have a different location for the May full board meeting. I know that's something that we discussed at the beginning of the term, was moving around, having more visibility in other parts of the district. So, um, we're looking at that for May, God willing. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to the Treasurer's Report.
Hi, everyone. The Treasurer's, Treasurer's Report has been published. I checked it, I checked the link, it's working. So if you review it and you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Um, if you don't have my contact information, it is available on the spreadsheet that we have. So feel free to reach out to me with any questions you have on it at all. Thank you.
Hazel, are you ready for the Secretary's Report?
She did text, there she is. Hazel? No, you gotta unmute, you have to unmute.
I got it, I got it. Um, unfortunately, we don't have any minutes.
No, 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 we have minutes. It's not ready to be voted on.
Okay, so they're not ready to be voted on. Okay, so hopefully, um, we'll vote on them next month. Right?
Yep, so we do have draft, the draft forms up. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Hazel. Yeah. District Manager?
So, um, in addition to what, uh, Kira and the chair announced, so Edgar's last day is March thirty-first. I just got email, also, um, April is not, also not reapplied for renewal. So, um, I'll send that to, um, Kira and Cynthia here. So March thirty-first. Did you wanna say anything? Did you wanna say goodbye? Why are you leaving us? Maybe I'm just kidding. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but it is your last day.
It's, you can put on a mic, I guess.
Yeah, it is, it's on.
All right. Um, well, for context, um, wasn't necessarily like decision. Um, I very much enjoyed the time the past two years, learning from all of you and being around you. But this past December, I was offered the opportunity to join Congress in a nonpartisan. But this past December, I was offered the opportunity to join Congress in a nonpartisan role. I will be joined, uh, joint committee taxation as their research assistant for the next two years, supporting, um, the country's tax policy, research-driven tax policy. That will, so basically, I'm the RA for the research assistant for all the economists in the committee to help them provide the best data to our senators and, and rep, and House representatives for the next two years. So. Yeah, so I'll be off to DC for that reason. That's why I never knew.
When do you leave, Richast?
Uh, I leave, um, early June. Well, I'll still be coming in, in and out for meetings, visiting and all that, but I'll.
Well, number one, thank you for sticking with us. Number two, congratulations. Number three, best of luck. We're gonna miss you. We will.
And then, so I'll just try to be real quick. Uh, I did send an email out to the board. Uh, yes, Cynthia referenced it about being mindful. And I don't remember, she said this because I'm multitasking usually. So your email addresses are not public, okay? Only hers is because she has a C B dot N Y C dot gov email address. Don't ask me for one. I've tried in the past to get, um, regular board members, C B dot N Y C dot gov email addresses. It's not possible. City won't do it. And I did, I did send an email out about our fax machine, which made one board member happy. I did send out a, a couple of, a couple of emails, uh, which board members that. I did send out a couple of emails about just a couple of constituents. You know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that you're not aware of, that we deal with, Harriet, Chris and I deal with on a daily basis. Some of you contact us about these issues. Some of you don't. Sometimes it's just regular constituents. That's when I was asking the council members' office about the compost pail. I just happened to see the compost pail I put outside. When I'm in the office, I put it outside because when I don't put it outside, it tends to attract fruit flies. So, um, so he came by, he wanted to get a pail. You know, he realized he missed an opportunity to get a free pail, but apparently that opportunity is available again. So, yeah, I can say much more, but if you have any questions, ideally, save it for after the meeting, not before the meeting when I'm setting up, even though I know it's really hard to do that. I used to do the same thing to my predecessor. And I, once I became district manager, I realized unless you're helping set up, it's best not to bother him while he's setting up. Then again, sometimes these matters are pressing. Sometimes you need to reach out to me. Sometimes people have to text me. I don't always see it. So make sure you use that Google spreadsheet. If your contact info is not in that spreadsheet, um, I tell you, it, if it is there, it minimizes my ability or my, my, um, reason to contact you or Harriet's reason contacting you, your permission to share your, your contact info with your colleagues. What's up? Oh, and so, um, Cynthia wanted me to clarify, uh, who's up for reelection, if they're seeking reelection, uh, for the officers of the board. So it's the sergeant at arm, it's the treasurer and the sergeant at arms. And so, yeah, then we'll handle that in April. So unless they're saying else, I will, Rich? Go ahead.
Um, in regards to the emails, I also share my e- um, email publicly because I have to email the, um, complainants or respondents. I just want to, I just want to publicly state that.
Yeah, that, that's, 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 I mean, if you don't want to do that, you don't have to. You can, you can funnel it through us, through the office. So keep that in mind. If there's something, if you don't want to talk to a constituent directly, uh, let us know. Thank you.
For leadership, I'm gonna switch it up a bit, I think. So for the question that we have coming up, since we're already coming up on April and May and June, I think for September, we're gonna be looking, and I know I'm gonna be looking at, discussing the online versus in-person option. It's something we've been talking about lightly for the past couple of months, but, um, we really would like a more in-person presence. I don't know what that looks like, just know that I'm thinking about it. Next thing, attendance at subcommittees. I think this year has gone way better than last year. I think the energy's been super positive, but the only thing I'm having an issue with is attendance at subcommittee meetings. So I think it's too late to do anything about that now. But I think starting in September, when we come back, we're gonna be really, really strict about the guidelines about attendance for subcommittee meetings. Any questions?
Well, I had my hand raised from a couple of topics back.
Go ahead.
I, yeah. I would suggest that everybody that's on the board make a designated email for their C B eleven stuff, separate of their personal stuff. This way, it kee- it keeps things more straight.
Okay. If you haven't done so already, you can just do a separate Google email. It's quick and easy.
And free.
And free. And if you need help, you can reach out to Jeremy.
Sorry. Um, just for those that aren't sure about what the guidelines are for attendance, it's in the bylaws. So you can see how many me- meetings you miss that would get you up for review by the full board. So, I'm sorry? The executive board, sorry. And then that would eventually go trickle down to the full board. But if you're unsure about how many meetings you need to have or how many meetings to miss, please review the bylaws because it's in there. Thank you.
Economic development, Juan?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, sorry that I'm appearing virtually. Um, I hope everyone can hear me. So we have, we have two applications. The first one is, um, as you can see in the agenda from Morris Park Inn, uh, they made an application to the Department of, I believe that's D O T, um, because they wanted to, um, get a permit so that they can have outdoor dining. Uh, we brought this issue up in committee and the committee made a motion to, um, to, to, actually, it's a motion to do nothing, really. Um, i- the way that the Department of Transportation set it up was that if we had an objection, we would send a, a, a letter of objection. If we had a letter of no objection with conditions, then we would send that. But if we simply had a letter of no objection or we had no objection, then we would do nothing. So, um, my, the first motion from the committee is to do nothing and send no letter to the Department of Transportation so that the Morris Park Inn's outdoor dining permit can be approved. Any questions?
Debbie?
Is it gonna just be tables or is there some sort of fencing around the area? Um, is it something that's gonna be pulled in each night? Or is it something that's there from April first till November?
So, all right, so I'll answer the, the part, parts of the question and other parts of the question I, I don't have the answer to. So they, they had a sort of a schematic with what it would look like. And it looked like it was going to be outdoor tables with a, like, four-foot barrier um, around the tables, dividing the tables from the, um, the sidewalk. Uh, we, we looked at the pictures that they sent and, and the schematic and it looked like there was ample space between the tables, um, or where the tables were going to be set up and the sidewalk where, you know, pedestrians would not be obstructed. I don't know if it's, I don't think it's going to be a permanent feature, but I don't know if it's going to be something that is going to be there from April through September. Um, the application is hyperlink to the agenda and is very detailed. So I think the answer to that question is there, but I, I apologize. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So, so, well, indeed, uh, anybody like in a wheelchair or people with strollers?
No, it did not look that way from the schematic that they send us, um, and the pictures that they send us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I'll just remind you, unlike some of the other places in the past, this is on Morse Mark Avenue. I know concerns you had in the past, we're on the side streets. This is generally speaking, Morse Mark Avenue is wide enough to not inhibit traffic, pedestrian traffic.
Correct. So, um, is there any other discussion? Right, so, um, any objections to sending nothing? Any abstention?
Nope, and nope.
All right, so the motion passes. Um, the second applicant was Gustitos Latino Restaurant and they were applying for a new liquor license. And for this establishment, the motion was to send a letter of objection. Um, the reason that the committee voted to send a letter of objection was, um, because we didn't get a full package, a full application package to the board. Uh, what that entails is, uh, the application, a request for the certificate of occupancy. Um, and I, I think there's some additional information. We didn't get that. Um, in addition to that, we had some, uh, complaints from, uh, community members. Uh, one of them was Mr. Gado, who spoke earlier. Um, and she went to the, uh, the establishment and found that they were not complying with the regulations from the liquor authority. Um, the liquor authority requires that if a establishment is applying for, for a liquor license, they have to display a notice and it has to be visible at, in, on their front door. Uh, Mr. Gado went there prior to the meeting. Um, it's what she told us and she took pictures of the door and found that there was no notice. So, um, there was also an, uh, individual that called from a seven-one-eight, I'm sorry, nine-one-seven-eight-six-six phone number, um, and indicated that he had been to the establishment and that there was alcohol served in the establishment. And obviously, that alcohol was served without a license. Um, we didn't get any, um, participation at the meeting from the representatives for Gustitos. Um, so we couldn't get their, you know, version of, of, of the story, basically. Um, just personally, there, there's been a mention about, you know, there being a incident in the barber shop in the community. I personally did not take that into account when determining what my position was going to be to vote because, you know, I, I felt that was not relevant to the restaurant, right? And just because there's a, a neighbor that is a bad neighbor doesn't mean that the restaurant has to be piled with that. And I just want to make the record clear that at least from my end, I did not vote based on that. And I don't think that my fellow committee members voted on the basis of that. Um, that's it for me. Are there any comments, questions?
Debbie, then Joe.
I'm sorry?
Isn't, isn't that just down the block from S one oh five?
Yeah, so we checked that and, and they, they meet the distance requirement between the school and, and, and the establishment. So that, that was not an issue. Any other questions? Comments? All right, so I guess we should move to vote. Again, the motion is.
Hold, hold on, Juan, sorry. Joe, Joe has a question and then Veronica.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay, good. Okay, my question is this. Uh, have you or members of your committee made any personal observations?
No. Um, no, we did not make any personal observations. Uh, Mr. Gado came to the meeting. She had a picture. I believe she showed a picture to some of the members. Um, but we personally did not go to the establishment to see whether, in fact, they were complying with the notice provision or not.
Okay, but, uh, that's sort of one of the responsibilities in your committee.
I don't think it is.
You don't think it is? Okay. I guess we think differently on that then. Thank you.
Uh, Joe, just, uh, just so you know, after the meeting that night, I did drive by and Mr. Elgato is right, there was no, no signage up to let them know they're. Yeah, no, no, I'm saying, but I, I drove by the establishment to check it myself.
Oh, you checked it?
Yeah, and there was no signage. Yes, just so that way, not that I did not believe Mr. Elgato, just so we could say that once somebody from the committee verified it.
Yeah.
So I did. And, um, also, we did ask Chris to reach out to the applicant to see if they would send inform, the information that we requested. As of this evening, I checked with Chris. We have not received a response or any other information from the, from the applicant. So they have not complied with our request.
But, probably if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm wrong, Juan, but you did confirm with Chris that, you know, he did clearly communicate this and they, and I think Chris said, Chris is online too. Chris, they didn't, they said they would give us the information, I thought.
They said they would prior to the meeting, but they never gave it to us. And then he reached out after the meeting because we had done the, a motion for objection to see if they would send it in. And if they sent it in, we had said we would review it again once we got that information. But as of this evening, they haven't sent it.
And just for the record, there was also another board member who was informed about the on-premise, um, consumption of, of liquor.
I just, I just want to say, just, I, I appreciate what everyone said is true. I, I asked Chris if he could me, I also asked Chris if, um, if, if he was certain, you know, in his estimation, whether he communicated clearly to the owners of the, of the establishment, you know, what our requirements were and what we needed. And, and yes, he indicated that he communicated to them clearly and they understood. They indicated to him that they did not have the certificate of occupancy, um, when, when he requested it. So I just want to say, it, I, I don't think it is our responsibility to go and, and check whether establishments are complying with the, uh, regulations from the, um, from, from, from the, you know, the state authority. Um, I'm reporting that, you know, a, a member of the community went and Veronica is reporting that she went. But I, I just don't think it is our responsibility to do that. And I couldn't make any representation to you guys as to whether they definitively did not comply with that or did or did not comply with it. I don't know what happened in between the time, you know, they could have been complying at some point and then something happened and when, and when these individuals went, they were not complying. So I, I really want to be careful not to take on responsibilities that are not our responsibilities because with that comes liability as well. So, again, if, I, I don't know if there's anything posted somewhere that says different, but as far as I'm concerned, I am not part of the liquor authority and my responsibility is not to do their job and police these places. I'm only reporting that other individuals said that they were not in compliance.
Okay. You ready, you ready to put it up?
Yes, so, um, again, our motion is for a letter of objection. Um, is, is there any, anyone opposing the motion?
Objection or not objection?
Of, uh, object, uh, so we're sending a letter of objection. We are object. That's the motion.
So anyone against? Anyone abstaining? Kadian abstains. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Juan. Oh, hold on. Who abstained?
Yeah.
K- oh, Kadian, Kadian abstained.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, education, culture and youth services?
So our committee was tasked with, um, nominating applicants for the Yankee Youth Leadership Award. Uh, we were asked to identify five, um, applicants to recommend for the award. We received exactly five applications. Um, all of the applicants were, met the criteria for the award. So we're recommending that all the applicants receive the award. And the names of the, um, nominees are listed in the agenda.
Any questions? Okay, um, I'm going to, because we don't have community development. Yeah, we don't have, yeah, so because we had a joint meeting, um, I'm just gonna turn the mic over to Stacy for community development and budget priorities.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So we had a joint meeting this month, March with Alex, and we talk about the budget, the twenty, the upcoming twenty twenty-six budget, the needs, and, you know, we asked everybody to send in the requests early. And we also spoke about our Juneteenth event, which we're in the, we're planning, which will be sometime in June. Next month, we'll have the full details and the date and more information on that. Last year, we have a very successful Juneteenth event, which both elected and member of the public in, you know, helped out. Thank you all.
Uh, moving on to transportation, Rabbi?
Uh, good evening, everybody. So, on transportation, we have the Metro North Penn Station Access Project Update, which was given to us by people from the MTA that is currently on the project. To give you bullets, you will not see the station for a while. To give you a bullet, they are planning some reduced rates for people taking the train over there. Uh, bullets are, there will not be at the current time, a form of a uh, parking lot. And last but not least, uh, we again discussed everybody's favorite topic, the jitney. And that doesn't seem that'll be a reality also. So bottom line is, they are close to schedule, on schedule, off schedule, but there will be a station there one day. Uh, number two, is there any questions on that? Jeremy, what are you laughing about, Jerry? I'm trying to be serious and you're all laughing.
You, you see he's laughing here compared to me?
Jeremy.
Hey, hey, this is nice, this is a nice change. Let's keep this going, huh?
Okay. Okay, now that that has been spoken about, we could speak about all these wonderful um, permits. So two out of three of them happened already and we had no objection. Life is beautiful. Uh, other street activity permits. Um, there are many of them here, but what the committee asked for from the office was to try to always get some information about if these are repeat uh, permit applications, if the police have had any problems with any of these permits. And when I called the office, it seems once we get these permits, it has passed by the police department also. So I'd kind of think all these five or six or seven, whatever of them have already, or maybe more, like nine of them have passed by already. So we will vote on this at our next meeting. Next serious thing is DOT. So we are hoping with the help of our fearless district manager to get a representative from DOT at, at our next committee meeting, which will be in April. And the topics that will be discussed is, are the following. The road diet, Bronxdale is one. The Bronxdale parking lot statistics, crime, et cetera, is two. Uh, three, and I think this has been fixed. And this could be confirmed by Ms. Velella and Ms. Debbie. The potholes on Pellon Parkway near the Hutch Parkway westbound and eastbound. So that might be a filled topic already. And the fourth topic is to relive that Stillwell turn westbound on Pellon Parkway that was there and one day just disappeared. And the ones that I'm going to add to that is any update on good old Pellon Parkway and Boston Road, which keeps on getting backed up. What I'm going to add to that is Allerton Avenue going into Marshall Lou stays the same, backed up, backed up. And last but not least, they did a very interesting thing by Columbus High School. They put up traffic lights there and they have stop signs there. And the traffic lights are like Christmas decorations. They're just sitting there and they don't work. I guess most Christmas decorations work. Okay, Santa Claus decorations, whatever. But they just, they're just sitting there. So I don't know why they would put up lights, which was probably is very, very distracting to a driver because they could be looking at the light and that's not working and forget about the stop sign. So that would be topic number five. So with the help of God, um, with the help of God, we'll discuss. Oh, there's one, one more, the Wilson Avenue bump outs, which could cause accidents. So we have all those things to discuss with DOT. If they show up to the next meeting, God willing, will have those questions answered. If anybody from this wonderful prestigious board has any other topics that they would like to discuss with DOT, or if you have any friends or members of the public that would like to discuss any DOT topics that you would like to get answers, please again, contact our fearless district manager, Mr. Jeremy. Thank you so much for your time. And Mr. Vice Chairman, you're doing a great job today. I'd just like to say.
Okay, um, so I just want to clarify one thing he said, just so we're clear on street activity permits. Um, I think, I think that requires a little um, clarification. So the PD, so there's a system that we have access to, that the staff has access to. Um, so we, for when it comes to like liquor license applications, we have to manually call the police department or whatever, because it's not, there's no, there's no um, app or something you log into. Whereas here, this is what we pull this from, or what we get emails and Chris got the locations. The PD can make recommendations. The PD has ability to make recommendations. So we can log into the system to see if they've done that. So that's why we don't need to additionally reach out to the PD. If that's, does that make sense for everybody? Okay. I mean, if they have a concern, they want us to vote a certain way, then they'll reach out to us.
Oh, uh, hello, I forgot one. Uh, we're also, Mr., somebody brought it up that on uh, Twain's place, those buses making that left turn into Boston Road is backing up the whole world and we're trying to try get a solution for that. So that's another topic for DOT. Ryan, Ryan brought it up. Thank you so much. Everybody have a happy Easter and a happy Passover. Have a good day.
Thank you. Um, just one final point of clarification. As far as the, when you say that, is it a given that we are looking specifically for like the PD checkoff? Or is it that they don't show up in the system unless the precinct has, has evaluated or reviewed it?
So Cr, um, Chris, if you're there and you want to comment, so we have to manually log in to look at it, right? Um, I mean, sometimes they will reach out to us if they're not familiar with the applicant, right? I mean, I think that's the only time we really need to communicate with them. Or say we have, I mean, look, we put in an objection. Say we've, say we vote on, well, they're not numbered, but we should number them. Say we vote on the third one down. They have access and they can see that. And I tell, I will tell you that downtown does give a lot of deference to us and the PD uh, for these. I don't want to say they have, that we have veto power, the PD does, but the PD obviously carries much more weight.
I guess.
Yeah, go, go, Chris.
Oh, well, uh, when you get into the system, uh, all the agencies, they have a part on that system in which they make comments and they either object or they say that, you know, we are pro for this uh, activity to occur. So each and every agency, like I mentioned, even at the committee meeting, depending on what kind of uh, permits are needed. For example, police has to be, when it comes to the part, they have to close the road. And also they are for the sound permit. So no matter what, the police is involved. The fire department is involved because, for example, they want to have open fire, kind of a barbecue right on the street because it's a block party. And FDNY gets involved, which means they have to make a comment. Then if you have to have to serve food, then Department of uh, Health gets involved. Then if you have to have games and, and, and other things, then Department of Consumer Affairs has to get involved. So all these agencies get involved, depending on what the person has requested to have as a party or block party, or whatever you might call it. If it is just simple block party where the kids go around, play, and some popcorn is served and the food, it's cooked on the backyard, but it's brought out, then you don't need, for example, a fire department permit. But no matter what, you're going to need a police department permit because of the sound and because of you blocking the street. So right then and there, each and every department or each and every agency put their own comment. So we have the chance to get into that. And look, either the police says, okay, we had an issue with this. Usually when that is a big issue, they call us, contact us, especially Community Affairs, and let us know that they are kind of skeptical to give the okay and what is our outcome. Other than that, that's about it.
So let me just clarify, Chris, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So there's three agencies always involved. Us, PD and downtown. The final say is with downtown.
Correct.
And like Chris said, if they're doing a sound permit, then they gotta get a special permit from the PD. Outside of that, the only other agencies are involved, depending upon what they want to do.
I, I just wanted to be clear that that is something that we will, we explicitly look for. I don't, I just don't want us to, you know, make an assumption that PD was okay with it because it showed up. You know what I mean? I just want to make sure that we're doing our, our due diligence to make sure that PD has given their input. But you clarified. Thank you. Um, moving on, anything else? Sorry.
Yes, so Chris, so I got the last three hit on our religious services and obviously I'm all for religious services. Why, if it's freedom of religion and everything, why are they asking for permits, one? And two, why would they be doing it on East Cunhill Road and blocking buses and trains and cars and everything?
It's partial. That is partial.
It's also, it's a church that's in Community Board twelve. Um, that's where that's originally, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I'm pretty sure that's a church in Community Board twelve. But because you're gonna block off the street, I mean, that's a big, that's a major street and it's in our district, huh? Yes, it's, it's, well, it's both. The, the, that's the border.
But I'm saying, it's on the eleventh side of the line.
Okay. You do need a permit for that. Even if you're not gonna block an actual street off, you're just doing the sidewalk, you still need a permit for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to bylaws.
Didn't have a quorum, so what could I say about it? Hopefully next month, we will have a.
We hear you, Sandy. Next meeting is April eighth.
Right.
Thank you, Sandy. Ethics and discipline, Naomi?
So, okay, so um, first and this may did not meet last month. We'll be, um, we are scheduled to meet next um, in April. And I just wanted to remind everyone, if you did sign up for the grassroots event for this Saturday, it starts at nine. Um, and I will be there at nine, or eight forty-five. So um, if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Uh, Naomi, do you know if there's still time to sign up for grassroots, if some, if people haven't done so already, or is it too late?
It's too late. They are at capacity.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to health and social services.
A great speaker from Live On New York, and that dealt with um, organ donations. She was excellent, explained every step that people would have to go through. And just, you just sign up. It doesn't mean that they're going to accept your organ, so to speak. And um, she will also have a table at the health fair if people have questions, but it was really, if you get to see the uh, YouTube, what is it, YouTube or Facebook, it really was, she explained everything. Debbie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Only because it's health related, the borough president had announced that the Bronx is finally getting a blood center. The Throggs Neck Shopping Center.
Excellent. Um, I would like to say, I know you're big on blood donations. I always have donated blood as well. I am also um, a bone marrow donor, so I would advise everyone, please, if it's something you would consider, is joining the bone marrow donor registry. If you're young enough, yes, yes. I was called once, they didn't need me, but that's neither here nor there. But please, it's something for everyone to consider. Um, much needed. Um, housing, land use, public safety and sanitation and environmental protection. Wendy?
I'm gonna go for Wendy. Yeah. Um, so we had Montefiore come in for the meeting, so I'm just gonna read out what they gave us in advance, but I really, really, really think you should watch the YouTube. It was a really good Q and A back and forth. We were there for two hours. So watch the YouTube if you can. But I'll just read what we got prior to the meeting. So the Montefiore Einstein East Campus Advanced Care Pavilion, formerly known as High Acuity, Acuity Tower. To expand the renowned Montefiore Einstein East Campus and to support the commitment to clinical excellence, research-driven treatment approaches and innovative patient care, the new advanced care pavilion will provide modern facilities to enable advance, advancements in cancer care, cardiovascular medicine, neuro, neurology, lung, lung surgery and orthopedics. Um, again, I think if you watch the YouTube, you'll get a detailed Q and A of us going back and forth for Ruben Diaz Jr. Came, he's a consultant for them, senior vice president there. Um, this isn't happening for another, I would say, three, ten years? Yeah, ten years, right? You would, uh, so um, please watch the YouTube and they're gonna come, they're gonna come back to the community board and present. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming once a quarter, I think. Um, so stay tuned for that. That's all.
Um, one thing I would like to add is that uh, Wendy did suggest maybe a visioning session at some point with Montefiore so that we can involve the community. The community can give feedback on things that they think might be, you know, that might work, that might not work. Um, and we did voice some of, some of the anticipated concerns that a lot of people might have. Uh, where'd Ronnie go? With some of the concerns that people have. So, you know, they are aware, they seem really commit, they seem really committed to working with the community to do something that is a good thing for our, for, for all of us, for our families. Um, so just keep that in mind. Parks and Recreation?
We did not have a meeting uh, this month, but they did start the project at Eastchester Garden. I can confirm, because I see it daily on my bus route, that they did start the demolition of tearing up that playground. So, and they moved in a lot of the equipment for um, the, they're gonna be fixing the drainage and such like that, that, that's, that stuff's moved in already, waiting for the demolition to be finished and then they'll put the stuff in.
Any questions?
I think Diana Finch, real quick, are they, did they start the botanical garden project? Yeah.
Yes, on Tuesday, they started the work on the new accessible entrance to the botanical garden at Bronx Park Eastern Waring. And unfortunately, that means that, that entrance is going to be closed for the duration, like about a year, maybe less. Um, but it will look wonderful. And they, first thing they did was put up the protection for all the trees that will remain. So, it's good.
Thank you. All right, yeah.
Um, so I don't know if this will fall under old business or new business, but I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Stacy mentioned as far as Juneteenth. I know that um, community development, budget priorities and the education committee are going to combine efforts to try to make this event happen. Um, so I'm just bringing it up, bringing it up now so that I can start seeing if we can get a permit. Um, as far as nailing down a date. Stacy? I'm sorry to grab you as you're, as you're stepping away. Is, uh, dear Alex, Stacy, Suzie, um, just because you're education and I can see you off the top of my head. And Dwayne, you're on community development and budget priorities? Um, I'm not sure how you guys, I know we discussed it briefly. Our first one was on a Father's Day. Um, and it was a Father's Day slash Juneteenth event. Um, I'm inclined to do it again on Father's Day, but I also have to find out whether or not Brady Court is available on Father's Day or the following Sunday.
Thursday. Yes. I said at present, we are available on Father's Day. I can hold the date if you would like.
Yes, please.
Date is that?
I believe it's June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth? It's a Sunday. Yeah, and that's what, you know. It's a Sunday. Yeah, and that's what, you know, our, our first Juneteenth was, if I'm not mistaken, Christine, do you, it was on a Father's Day. Yeah, yeah.
Do you think Father's Day would be a? Do you think Father's Day would be a good idea?
The first one was on a Father's Day and it was, it was very successful.
But we wanted to get bigger and a lot of fathers might not, you know, like have kids, like, could we bring Jeremy down and Father's Day? You know, some people wants to be with family. What about the day before?
Um. Committee, any thought, do you have that date available, the day before? You do not.
You do not?
But that's like a Thursday, right? That would be the twenty-second. Do you have the twenty-second?
Yeah, I think that would be better.
So does everyone feel okay with setting our Juneteenth up for June twenty-second? Okay. Okay, all right. Um, I don't know, you know, do, do we, do we wanna do a vote on it? That's fine, you know, any objections to um, Juneteenth? Um, Community Board eleven doing its third annual Juneteenth event and slash Father's Day event on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at Brady Court? Seconded? It's the Sunday.
I just seconded it.
Okay, seconded by Rich? Any objections? Any abstentions? Excellent, so we'll get to planning. Thank you. And new business? Rabbi?
Try to keep this up the new business, but I have a question back on the botanical gardens thing. If they're taking away that asset, maybe Ms. Finch could answer this question. If they're taking that away, that gate, why can't they make a gate a little closer somewhere? Constructing for a year, right? So why can't they make something temporary for the Pelham Parkway residents to get into the botanical gardens? To help to, to help to schlep around all the way around there. But people walk too. People walk. People walk. Not everybody has a bus. Nobody wants to go on the bus.
Rabbi, that's a good point. Um, but they presented this plan, I think, two years ago, actually. Um, and I think it's really hard to find an alternative because they have to use that bridge and the bridge is gonna be under construction.
Well, I'm saying there used to be an entrance before you were born.
Sure.
Right across, right across from the Bronx Zoo on Fordham Road.
Uh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was, and I think it's still sitting there as a gate.
It, it is.
So what would be the end of the world if the same way that the guy sat on uh, over there to let people in over there, well, if you move them over there and this way, the people don't, don't wanna take the twelve bus or take the car, could walk right in over there.
Good point. We could bring it up.
Can we uh, can we write that in, Jeremy?
We can inquire. We can't, we can't make him do it.
I mean, I don't think it's a multi-million thing to open up the gate there.
We'll, we'll inquire.
It says.
Good.
Hold on.
Sounds easy to me. Right, that's correct.
Yeah. So. Um, I believe our borough president might be trying to make it here before we adjourn for the evening. Um, she might be close. If you, if you'd like to wait, I mean, you know, I, you'd like to wait and, and give her, give her the floor for a few. I think she's a few minutes away. Is that okay, Kira? Okay, so she's five minutes away. If you wanna take a five-minute restroom break, we can do that? And we're back, folks. Um, I believe the borough president is, is here, so if you don't mind um, having a seat once again. Kira just um, went out to meet up with her. Thank you all for waiting. I appreciate it. All right, everyone. So we have our esteemed borough president joining us this evening. Thank you for coming. And the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to everyone here in person, to Community Board eleven, to everyone who's joined us virtually. Thank you so much. I know that your meeting is winding down and I truly appreciate your indulgence in waiting for me to come. I had an ITAR event tonight at Borough Hall, so I wanted to make sure, I was trying to get out as quickly as I could because in this work, I am trying to get around to all twelve of our community boards. We've been working several months to recruit new members based on vacancies that we have and many of our active board members that are applying again for one and two-year appointments. So we have a lot going on. We commenced the application process on Friday, March twenty-first. And now everyone that has applied is being contacted by our office to come for in-person and remote interviews. And we're going through that process and we are very, very committed to make sure that our team, working with our district managers and the chair of all of our community boards, that we pick the very best when it comes to talent, experience, and all of the amazing diverse communities that we proudly represent. It's important to us. It's important to my team and I to do that every year. Uh, we are bringing back our community board appreciation event. I think it may be a barbecue, not sure. But we have incorporated it into Bronx Week this year, Bronx Week twenty twenty-five, which starts on May the sixth. So our event will be Wednesday, May seventh. Uh, more than likely, it will be back at Split Rock. Love Split Rock. Uh, and we always wanna make sure we have an amazing time just celebrating our community boards as we gear up for fall season. Uh, we also have upcoming trainings that we will make sure that we share with all of you so that you can be that. It's extremely important for us as we work with all of our city agencies, particularly Civic Engage Commission, to make sure that we're doing even more than the standard. We want to always provide as much training as we can to support our members because it is you that provides the guidance for the community, for the residents, with input from all of our stakeholders. So thank you so much for the work that you do. I see many of you around in my travels. I'm always trying to make sure that our office shows up. Our Director of Community Boards, Kira Gannon, as well as Alexis Ruiz, our deputy, uh, and Kenny Augusto, as well, in addition to all of the other members of our team. So exciting times, ladies and gentlemen. Let me thank the Greater Morris Park Community here in CB eleven for your commitment, for your dedication, for helping us to come up with the best ideas on how we can further invest in this community. You know that we were recently awarded twenty million dollars in downtown revitalization initiative. Round eight through the governor's office. Shout out to Governor Kathy Hochul. This is round eight of DRI funding and we have not been awarded DRI funding since two thousand fifteen. And that was down at the Lower Concourse in Community Board four and one. And we applied two neighborhoods, very competitive. We competed with all of our colleagues in other boroughs. And in the first time in the history of DRI, I'm very proud to say that our borough was awarded the entire twenty million dollars. That's amazing. And I think it speaks volumes to the potential and the promise that we represent in the Greater Morris Park community. When you look at a lot of the projects that are coming, the commercial revitalization, park upgrades, investments in our infrastructure, pedestrian plazas, making sure that we invest. You all know that the Hutchinson Metro Center is one of the top ten business corridors in the city of New York. That's amazing. From thousands of employees at Montefiore Einstein, Mercy University, Calvary Hospital, the Bronx Psychiatric Center, the Children's Center, and so many more opportunities. P S A two is not too far away where we have our nine-one-one call takers. There's a lot happening in that area. That is also going to be the site of our brand new Bronx Steam School. So excited about steam, science, technology, engineering, architecture, and math coming to the Bronx. Modeling off of Brooklyn Steam, which is at the Navy Yard, but their focus is different from ours because we're the Bronx. So our focus will be healthcare, life sciences, and research. And we wanna have a pipeline directly to Mercy University for college-bound students and also industries in the healthcare sector to Montefiore Einstein. It is a great partnership. New York City Public Schools, SCA, we're working with Simone Development. We have a plan. We have the space. We're in the process. We have a plan. We have the space. We're in the process of signing a lease. We have $5 million from Speaker Call Hasty. I am adding additional money in this capital budget, which I'm excited about as soon as it gets passed by July 1st. There's a lot of opportunity there, and I think the Governor and her team at Empire State recognize that. And that is why we were graciously awarded $20 million. We are working collectively. There are 32 projects already identified for the Greater Morris Park community. So we will be in touch with further updates on prioritizing those projects because as much as I love to get $20 million, you know that's not enough. So that's just the beginning. We are looking at working with all of our business improvement districts, all 12, including Morris Park, White Plains Road. It's really important for us to make sure that we engage with all of our bids, so that is something we're actively doing. You all know we issued and did a series of action items during our annual State of the Borough address. That was last week as I celebrated my birthday. Still celebrating because it's March, and that's just what I do. I celebrate my birthday all month because I often don't get to celebrate. And we issued our State of the Borough address with our message in our blueprint, "The Bronx will strive and thrive in '25" when it comes to small business development, job growth, economic development, supporting our infrastructure investments, 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 and jobs, pathways to the class. It matters, and we are dedicated, committed, and determined to make our borough the very best that it possibly can be. So when we talk about securing the Bronx, protecting our future, we mean it when it comes to economic development, when it comes to our children, our families, our older adults, when it comes to people with disabilities, our veterans, that we have to do more for. Survivors of domestic violence that need permanent housing, it matters. So in our State of the Borough, we outlined a lot. And I'll just give you some snippets because I want to make sure that if you have not had a chance to check it out, it was live broadcast on BronxNet, so you can capture it there. It is a lot in this speech. We talked about public safety, the work we're doing with NYPD. We gave them $400,000 last year to purchase security cameras across the Bronx, and I am putting in more money for this FYI '26. I'm also working with DSNY, Department of Sanitation, because we can give them money for cameras to go after a Regal dumping that is happening all across the borough that just drives me insane. So we are absolutely committed to putting money in the budget for them as well. NYPD, we're giving them money for a new mobile unit. Gave them money last year for a mobile unit, and I'm going to add a second one. As much as I can do to support PD, I can and will. I work with the Department on Recruitment because we don't have enough officers. We lose more officers to attrition than we hire them, and there is a big challenge in the department. That's why you see a lot of changes that are being made by Commissioner Jessica Tisch. So I was with our Captain, Captain Tia Tong, and the 4-9 precinct community council just this week, and we talked a little bit about what more we can do to support the 4-9. And there's an academy class graduating in April. Excited. Every class that graduates from the academy that comes to the Bronx, I get a chance to speak to them during orientation. And I talk to them about our work, about engaging with stakeholders and leaders and civic groups and everyone that represents our community. So I'm very proud of the work we're doing at Patrol Borough Bronx, all 12 precincts, two PSAs, and two transit districts. It's a lot. And now that today is opening day at the Yankee Stadium with the New York Yankees, now we have the Yankee detail that's back. So it is a lot happening, and the Yankees won today too, by the way. So in addition, we released, and I'm so excited about this, it's somewhere. My staff will get it from me. Kira, can you give me that? Yes, this is great. Okay, so I love this. We released a Senior Resource Guide. It's in Inglés y Español, and this gives you a list of all of the relevant social service programs, health programs, food programs for older adults. We're giving these out to our older adult centers, service providers, community organizations, anyone that serves older adults. And we released this during the State of the Borough. We want to make sure that we support our older adults. We have to make sure they have access, whether it's free, it's free, any of the other subsidy programs that provide support. We want to do that. So we have these hot off the press, and if you need one, please, or if you think of anyone that would be interested, please send them our way so that we can make a delivery to them. We also released our birthing report. You all know how maternal health is a big deal, very big priority for us, not just for me. As a woman, my Deputy Borough President is a woman as well. And we released a report during the State of the Borough that focuses on maternal mortality and morbidity and understanding that women of color are 9.2 times more likely to die during childbirth because of pregnancy-related complications. We believe in Bronx-based birthing centers. We believe in birth workers, doulas, and midwives and what they do, wraparound services, patient-centered care, holistic approaches. We have right now a reproductive health and wellness center that's in Norwood. It's called Mirum Clinic, and it is appointment. There are doctors and midwives that are there, Dr. Carla Williams, Myla Flores, Bruce McIntyre, run this incredible clinic. It's in the backdrop of North Central. And we believe that's the beginning of the birthing report. We've been working closely with Governor Hochul and legislative leaders because we want to make sure that we provide support and capital. I am committing capital to this project because that's how much it matters to us to deal with maternal mortality and morbidity, and we have the answers. The first birthing center in New York City opened in the Bronx. It was called the Childbearing Center of Morris Heights, and it was for 20 years, and then it closed. We only have two left in the state, in Buffalo and Brooklyn. The Bronx should have one, and we will have one. That is an important priority for us, and we are going to make it happen. We're still reimagining the Kingsbridge Armory. The largest armory in the world sits in our borough in Community Board 7 on the West Side. We have over $200 million invested. EDC announced a new development team. As of January, we're going through the U-Lat process, and we're figuring out who the tenants will be. It is a union job, project labor agreement. Yes, yes, yes. We have building trades and a number of unions already onboard. It is going to be massive. We'll have a healthcare center, community space. We will have a YMCA, a museum of salsa. We're working with Live Nation. There are organizations that are interested in this. Think about the transformation it will have, not just on Kingsbridge, but the entire borough, bringing in revenue, creating good-paying jobs, local hiring opportunities, MWBE. It matters. It's a big deal. We're finishing up Phase 1 of Orchard Beach. I'm very excited about that. $100 million invested. We all go to Orchard Beach. It's called the Bronx Riviera, right? Over a million visitors every year, global destination. I'm excited about the pavilion project. And finally, the pavilion will be ADA compliant, long overdue. That matters. So we're already looking at Phase 2, which is another $100 million. That's a big project. But we're working with all of our elected officials in the Parks Department. I'm excited about that. We also talked very, very extensively about housing and the affordability crisis and homelessness and how we can do more for families and veterans and create more affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, pathways to the middle class. That is a big deal for me. We have families that are double and tripled up, and they need access. They need quality. They need stability. They need a stable roof over their head. Food equity is a big deal for us. Many of you are a part of so many efforts to give out food, and I recognize that. And there are too many families going home hungry, not having access to healthy food, and that bothers me. It bothers me in a real way. I have launched an effort to give out Health Box, which are the $2 coupons that you use at farmer's markets, green markets, and farm stands. And we added $10,000 last year. Now I'm going to add even more in this year's budget, and we're going to travel all over the Bronx. And we visit farmer's markets, and we also help families with accessing programs that give them access to produce, especially older adults. It's not acceptable for a senior to stand online for hours for a box of food. That does not sit well with me, and we have to address that. You saw the article that came out in the Bronx Times this week that talked about in a post-pandemic world in the Bronx, families are still living in poverty. They're still hungry, and they're still food insecure. And I acknowledge the challenges, but I also acknowledge the people on the ground that are doing work. I will never take that away from non-for-profits that serve our families and residents every single day. Yes, it matters. We have another report that's coming out on our bids, which I'm very excited about. We're looking at all 12, and we're looking at what we can do to help support the bids a little bit more. Overall, ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot going on. We have a Future Forward Bronx Initiative that we announced, which is our partnership with the Department of Labor, DOL. Can you believe we've had at least a dozen job career fairs at Borough Hall and outside the borough, in Borough Hall and other places in the Bronx? And we've had over 700 applicants come to one of our job fairs because they're in need of employment. That shows you the need. We are also targeting populations that have the highest level of unemployment, like people with disabilities, like veterans. We have to make sure that they have opportunities when they have normally been just eliminated and excluded from the traditional job markets. So we've been working with employers that are inclusive, that are hiring, hiring on the spot. We do hiring halls. Very excited that we are working on a hiring hall with the NYPD. That's a big deal for me. We're going to do recruitment for individuals to join the NYPD, both uniform and civilian, at Borough Hall, and that's coming up very shortly. The New York Blood Center, another priority. There is someone here that talks to me about the Blood Center every time I see said individual. And I am so proud that the New York Blood Center has identified a location in our borough in Throgsnag, and we are right now going through renovations to fit, configure, and to transform it into this beautiful space. I posted what it would look like on social media, and I'm very excited about N Y B C. I hope blood drives at Borough Hall quite a bit of time. As someone who's had a blood transfusion myself, I know the important work that the Blood Center does. And it has been unacceptable that our patients have to travel outside the Bronx. That is not acceptable. So the New York Blood Center has been a partner. They're joined with community organizations all over this borough. We have blood drives with precincts, with colleges, with universities. It happens. And now we will have a home. So I'm proud of that, and thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate your advocacy. I appreciate you never giving up because no matter what, we do this work for our community, for our children. Not always. It's not about us. It's about our community and our families. You all may have seen an announcement I also made, and this was another priority for me. I was heartbroken when we lost the multiplex cinema at the Concourse Movie Theater on 161st Street. It left us with one movie theater in this borough at Bay Plaza Mall. Unacceptable. We know the landlord of the mall, and we reached out and said, "What can we do? Can we bring movie theaters back? Can we make it attractive?" I know no one wants to go to theaters anymore. Everyone's streaming and looking on their phones and not really going to movie theaters post-COVID, but can you guarantee, can you commit that we'll do something? And he said, "Yes, we're going to try to find a tenant and a partner that can work with us." And they identified Regal Cinemas, who has movie theaters in Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens, and now they are in the Bronx. And what I love about Regal is that they are a willing partner. When they launched their opening last week, and we were there on the 18th of the month, they have graciously agreed to donate a portion of their proceeds from sales back into the community. They're working with PAL, and they're working with other non-for-profits, and I really appreciate that. And what I'm looking to do with Regal, it's called Regal Concourse, I want to have a film festival in the Bronx. Have we ever had a film festival in the Bronx? We have, and in some way, it's been pop-ups, but nothing consistent, right? Mont Haven, yes, the Mont Haven Film Festival, yes. We've had that. And we've also had the Hispanic Film Festival, too. They did one down by 149th Street. But I want something a little bit more consistent that happens every year. And my goal is to work with the field organization and make a film festival a part of Bronx Week. We can do that. If we plan it, we can do that. And that's something that is not only a priority, but I want to make it happen. I also want to bring Bronx Fashion Week to our borough in a real way. We've hosted it at Borough Hall. We have fashion designers right here in our borough. We have incredible schools like the Bronx Cinema School that is focusing on cinematology. And we can get young people to produce movies, and they can host the film festival. That's great. I would love that. It is so important for us to give young people spaces, stages to sit or to showcase their talents. It matters. I have a Bronx Youth Council that I meet with every month at my office, and I met with them today. And one of the young ladies that goes to DeWitt Clinton High School, she's a senior. She said, "Borough President, I see the work that everyone is doing across the Bronx, but you know what bothers me? We work so hard, and every time I read the newspaper, they talk about something negative. Don't people understand that we are working really hard, sometimes in spite of a lot of challenges and roadblocks and hurdles that we're confronted with?" And I said, "That's exactly why we do this work, to change the narrative of our borough, to show the rest of the world what the Bronx is capable of doing." All of us, all of you, showing the rest of the world what the Bronx can do. So I said, "Yes, that is why we have Bronx Youth Councils. We're getting ready for a youth summit led by young people. I'm going to sit down, put my feet up, and let all the young people in." I love it, coming up with great ideas, talking about criminal justice reform and how we can build stronger communities, working with young people. It makes me so excited, ladies and gentlemen, because that's why we do this work. And so if I ever want to encourage all of you, when you may feel that your work is not impactful, think about the young people. Think about the young people that we work with in our communities, in our spaces, in our CBOs, in our non-for-profits, in all of these spaces. The young people that need our support, our guidance, our encouragement, they need to be inspired to do this work. So even when folks say, "All I hear are the negatives," we're going to turn that negative into a positive. That is our goal. So my final message is, we are ready to continue this work. We have a number of initiatives that are focused very intentionally on economic development, small business support, accessing capital for all of our small businesses. The work that BXEDC and Bronx Tourism is doing is phenomenal. We're getting ready for Bronx Week, starting on May 6th all the way to May 18th. The website, easiest website, folks, www.i LovetheBronx, P-H-E, The Bronx. Beautiful. You can go on iLoveTheBronx.com. You can find out all the information from Bronx Week to our children's parade, to all the events we're having. We're getting ready to launch Bronx Week in early May. We'll have a press conference. We'll have a booklet that will have all of the Bronx Week-sponsored events. It is going to be an amazing recognition. We're also getting ready for a number of other events that are happening across the borough, very intentional, from Mother's Day to a gospel concert, the film festival that we're working on, our summer concerts that we have in July and August. We have a lot, and our goal is to make the Bronx better, the very best that it possibly can be. We are in the budget process right now, so we are working closely with all nine council members, our senators and our assembly members. I've had the chance to meet with a majority of our elected officials. We're going to have some amazing announcements coming out on budget. And while I can't talk about it now because the budget is not yet officially adopted, I will tell you that we are going to make sure that our high schools are supported, like Lehman. I spent four hours at Lehman High School campus two weeks ago and fell in love with all six schools and learned about the athletic field that needs work, and we're going to make sure that we do everything to support our schools. $50 million in three years from our office just to schools. Over $94 million in everything else, from cultural institutions to CBOs to hospitals. And yes, Jacoby is on my list. They have a long list, along with North Central and Lincoln. But we're going to do our very best to take care of all of our hospitals and our Gotham's. So shout out to anyone that's on the CAB. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know your work is important when it comes to healthcare and health outcomes. I'm working closely with Montefiore Einstein. You know, we gave the $1.4 million for two new 3D mammography machines and a mobile unit, which I'm very excited about. The Bold Buddies Program, Albert Einstein College of Medicine. Yes, we have to support our hospitals. We have to support the programs that are saving lives, early detection, early screening. Yes, it matters. So I thank you so much for your Early detection, early screening. Yes, it matters. So I thank you so much for your time. I have flyers for almost every event coming up, but thank you so much. I look forward to coming back. Hopefully, I won't be as late and I don't have a conflict. Sorry about that. Thursdays tend to be very busy. I have a lot of cultural events and other celebrations because it's important to recognize our diversity. So if anyone is free tomorrow, we'll be in Kingsbridge celebrating Greek Independent Heritage Month, right, for our Greek-American community. And we do a lot of those and I appreciate that. My team and I are excited about the opportunities to work with everyone and we look forward to getting even more money, more delivery booths for the Bronx, free money, grants, not loans. Thank you so much and I appreciate it. Thank you to our district manager, Madam Chair, everyone at Community Board eleven, elected officials and staff. Look forward to working with you. And finally, Happy Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Um, do we have any questions, comments? Well, that being said, happy birthday. Thank you for Jaco- thank you for coming. Yes, motion to adjourn, seconded by Rich. Uh, meeting adjourned at nine twenty-four P M. Thank you all for your time.